... session 2023-14 for July 18th, 2023. Those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer, Praise of Leesons, please do.
... We work on heaven. I'll be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Forgive us our trespasses, and we forgive those who trespass against us. And we describe temptation, and the miscreant evil. The kingdom, the power, and the glory be revealed. Amen.
... Jesus Christ, the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, but with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained motion from council approved the consent agenda.
To move.
Second. Any corrections, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, consent agenda passes unanimously. This time we have a proclamation to recognize the Parkside High School baseball team for winning the state 2A championship and the Paul Farnor Sportsmanship Award. Shane Baker will present the proclamation, and I see, I see baseball players, if you would join him at the podium, that would be great.
Bring the whole team up.
Everybody, everybody. Congratulations, too.
How we doing? How we doing, guys? Can't shake on your whole thing. Heck, I'll shake everyone, everyone, come on here. We'll play team, especially yours. How you doing? Good to see you.
You can line up on both sides, give yourself some room, spread over here.
It is with great pleasure that the county executive and the members of the Wycomico County Council extend this certificate of recognition to the Parkside High School baseball team for winning the state 2A championship and the Paul Farnor Sportsmanship Award. We congratulate you on your athletic accomplishments.
Want to say anything? Want to say anything? Somebody's got to say something.
Okay.
Come on up. Cal.
First off, thank you, County Council. We do appreciate this, thank you. This is a great group of guys. They believed in this journey right from the get-go. They have an amazing leader in Coach Dahlberg, and it was just a great, great opportunity this year to see this team. Things started off a little slow at the beginning, then they finally woke up, and next thing we knew, they were playing Waldorf for a state championship team. And we at Parkside could not be more proud of them. They are fantastic student athletes. We make sure that our students do as well in the classroom as they do on the athletic fields, and I can guarantee you that each one of these individuals, some of whom are going to be leaving for college in the very near future, did a great job for us and are just outstanding human beings. So we're, we're proud of them all. Sorry we couldn't get them all here, obviously with summer and travel baseball and vacations and so forth, it was a little bit tricky getting them all here, but it's just, thank you again for, for doing this, we do appreciate it.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Can you get everybody? If I turn sideways off there.
Thanks, guys. Congratulations. Thanks again.
Good seeing you, brother.
Come, let's, let's do something.
Yeah, it's down there. Watch the blue bar at the top. Yep, yep.
I need some of this stuff.
Mr. Mitchell, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. This is a public hearing on legislative bill 2023-07, an act to authorize and empower the county, Wycomico County, Maryland to borrow on the faith and credit of the county an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $12,52,500 into evidence such borrowing by the issue and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds of the county, the proceeds thereof to be used by Wycomico County to finance, refinance, or reimburse the cost of certain projects of the Board of Education and the airport, including costs of planning, design, acquisition, construction, improvements, installation, renovation, rehabilitation, repairing, furnishing, and equipping of land, facilities, buildings, and structures, together with other costs and financing costs related thereto as further described in the full bill. And Director Owen is here for questions if necessary.
Mr. Mitchell, this time we hold a public hearing. Open the floor for public hearing on legislative bill number 2023-07. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this legislative bill, come to the podium, please state your name, your, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on legislative bill 2027, excuse me, 2023-07. Entertained a motion from council, hang on a second, because I'm trying to... Entertained a motion from council to approve legislative bill 2023-07.
So move.
Second.
Second.
And discussion. Ms. Owen?
Just some questions to help clarify for the public, okay?
Yep.
I know that you've answered some questions with Mrs. Hurley on some of this. The original on the fuel farmer to begin with, the CIP originally had $2 million.
Yes.
The CIP that we just passed had $2 million.
Yes, and as we discussed at the first meeting when this was introduced, was that the budget then amended this amount and as well as amended amounts for the Board of Education. And so the capital budget that was adopted has the amounts that are in here. And the charter states that the capital budget needs to be amended anytime you change a, a project. And so the capital budget was amended, or I wouldn't even say amended, the capital budget differs from the CIP, but the council adopted those differences during the fiscal year 24 budget ordinance.
Where are we, where do you think we're going to be in this? Whereas if we change a budget, should we not at the same time make an amendment to the CIP? I know it's a planning document, but it does, you know, when we go back and forth, even like a year from now to try to reflect what happened or what didn't happen, we're still going to probably see that there's a conflict there, and it's, it can lead to confusion.
So we, but we never reissue a CIP. So my recommendation all along, kind of since I've taken this seat, and it's, it's what we did with the city of Salisbury when I was there as well, we, we moved away from amending the planning document to amending the ruling document. We have always amended both. My recommendation is it doesn't, we don't need the step of amending the planning document because that's just a plan that we do. We amend the ruling document, which is your capital budget. And so my recommendation for simplicity and for cleanliness is, is that when we come to you for a change, we amend the capital budget. And that is, so again, when we came in June with the budget ordinance, we had amendments to that, to the, we had changes from the CIP, but we didn't, we made changes to the budget, and council approved those. And that is now the ruling document, and that is what we're operating under.
Questions from council members.
I, I will request, if this passes, and I think Mrs. Hurley has this from our legal counsel, just due to timeline basis, if at all possible, if, if this does get adopted today, that it gets signed today because of running out deadlines to meet our, our financing schedule.
Certainly. Any other questions, ma'am? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call. All those in favor of legislative bill 2023-07, say aye. I will start with Councilman Shields.
Aye.
Councilman Merritt.
Aye.
Vice President Baker.
Aye.
Councilman Wynn.
Aye.
Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative bill number 2023-07 passes unanimously. We'll do that right away.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Have a good.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
We'll see you in a bit. Don't go far. Mr. Mitchell?
This is legislative bill 2023-08, an act to amend chapter 138 of the Wycomico County Code titled Electrical Standards, Article One, titled General Provisions, and Article Three, titled Registration of Electricians and Inspections. Mr. Illuminati is here, and I wonder if he or the council believes taking the, the next one at the same time would be wise. It's on a similar subject.
Just do them separately, if you don't mind, Mr. Mitchell. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on legislative bill number 2023-08. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this legislative bill, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on legislative bill 2023-08. Entertained a motion from council to approve legislative bill 2023-08. Second. All right, any discussion?
I have a quick question. It's something personal. I need another receptacle in my house, you know, electric receptacle. So if I get someone, you know, they teach you how to do it at Home Depot, do people who try to do their, their own work would have to be approved by this?
No. So if you improve your own house, you, I'm not paused about the procedure, I still believe you need a permit, and it still needs to be inspected, but that you do not have to be registered with the county in order to improve your own house, okay?
But I have to have it inspected, the, the electrical socket.
I would defer to staff for your hypothetical. My belief is yes, because ultimately, when, if and when you go to sell the property, it's going to have to pass inspection, and if this is an improved piece of electrical. Now, it's recorded, if you like change the ceiling fan, I don't know if that's such low voltage, because it's just swapping one for another, you're not moving wires, whereas moving a receptacle is moving wires. So, but again, the interpretation that the county's taking is improving your own home, you have to follow certain parts, but you do not have to be registered with the county.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of legislative bill number 2023, will be saying aye. I will start with Councilman Holloway. Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilman Wynn.
Aye.
Vice President Baker.
Aye.
Councilman Merritt.
Aye.
Councilman Shields.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Legislative bill 2023-08 passes unanimously.
This is legislative bill 2023-09, an act to amend chapter 38 of the Wycomico County Code titled Electrical Standards, Article Two, titled Registration of Electricians and Inspections, section 13824, titled Inspections, Permits, and chapter 141 of the Wycomico County Code titled Fees, section 141-3, titled Department of Planning and Zoning, Community Development. And Mr. Illuminati is still here.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. This time we open the floor for public hearing on legislative bill 2023-09. Again, if you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. This concludes the public hearing on legislative bill 2023-09. Entertained a motion from council to approve legislative bill 2023-09. Second. May I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Yes, Josh?
Just one quick question. So I guess in going through this process with registration, this, we now will then comply with Maryland, what's it called, the Maryland Electricians Act, and that, is there anything further that we need to do, I guess, as far as meeting those, what the state set out? I know that there's a little bit of questions about what needed to be done, and so I'm making sure, doubling back, make sure that we're, that we have met all that, that we will comply, and that this is, fits in with what the state was trying to do, and that what we want to do.
Correct. So originally, this, the legislation that's been introduced, the two parts was, was ready to go in March, April, the board had worked on it all last year, waited until after the end of the legislative session, after the governor's time to sign, that's why it was brought forth, to make sure it's, if they change it next year, we may be back next year, but it's as up to date as possible.
Perfect. Thank you. That's all.
We'll take a roll call. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those in favor, Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilman Wynn.
Aye.
Vice President Baker.
Aye.
Councilman Merritt.
Aye.
Councilman Shields.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Legislative bill number 2023-09 passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Illuminati?
Believe him, right back up.
Mrs. Hurley, good evening, or good morning.
Good morning, Council President and council members, ladies and gentlemen. Next on the agenda this morning, we have discussion on cannabis consumption, and with us today, we have Mr. Christopher DiVala with the Maryland Cannabis Administration, Sheriff Mike Lewis, Ms. Lori Carter with the director, who is the Director of Planning and Zoning, and Mr. Andrew Illuminati with the County Attorney's Office.
Would you like to join us? Certainly may. Thank you. If you could, state your name and your title for, for the public record.
Lori Carter, the Planning Director.
Andrew Illuminati, Office of Law. Mike Lewis, Sheriff Wycomico County.
Mr. DiVala with the Maryland Cannabis Administration.
We appreciate you all being here. It's, it is a big issue. We've had discussions not only locally, but you know, even through the Maryland Association of Counties, this is a big concern of theirs as well, that something that's being implemented by the state and being implemented very quickly, I think the rest of it is all, everyone trying to play catch-up to what may happen, and honestly, to some, to certain extent, what hasn't even been determined yet. So we did want to have you here today to help clarify the impact of this, as well as what the real specifics might be. So I will open the floor to whomever chooses to speak first.
Of course.
I get the first chair. So just to put on the record, please understand, I'm just an investigator, so I left 25 years with Maryland State Police, and in March took a job with the Cannabis Administration. A little history, we just switched recently with Governor Moore's signature of the new law, which is now adult use cannabis in the state. The MCA is now an independent agency within the state government under Governor Moore, for which we are not a law enforcement entity, we're an enforcement and education entity. I'm an investigator and responsible for Wycomico County, so as you probably already aware, you already have one dispensary in this county already, and Peninsula is also rated within the number two or three last month, they were the second seller of cannabis in the state of Maryland. So in this area on the eastern shore, we have two of the busiest, Cambridge is, well, Cambridge and Peninsula go back and forth, Sunburst in Cambridge and Peninsula go between the number two and number three sales in the state. The number one seller is in Annapolis, and that's Golden Leaf. It is a multimillion dollar business, it's very busy in this area, because again, until Delaware just passed their law for adult use, they call it recreational, we call it adult use, the business has been quite active in our community. We have a lot of transient come through the area, along as you know, Wester County Route 50 coming through, going Ocean City, our business has been pretty busy. We have two investigators in the eastern region, myself and Barry Bogus, Mr. Bogus is a retired state trooper as well, he has the northern region of the state, of the eastern shore, I have the southern. We also cover Annapolis area, we also have places in Cecil County and Kent County, Maryland. So we are quite spread out throughout the region. Again, we are not law enforcement, we're retired law enforcement, we are just investigators. So similar to what your health department would be, where they walk into a restaurant and make sure they're complying with law, we're the same way. I have no arrest powers, we do not carry a gun and a badge, we depend on our local law enforcement if we should have any problems. So as you know, July 1st, we did sweep into the adult use, it has been very beneficial in activity in the businesses, we have seen an uptake in sales, July 1st was a very active day for us, and it continues to be. Otherwise, I'm open to your questions, I don't know exactly what you're looking for, what the rest of the panel can provide to you, but I can fill in some blanks for you.
Carter?
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to, and not just to pass the buck, but we've been working directly with our county attorney here, or the co-county attorney, and he's been helping us to get through the process of understanding exactly what's to be expected.
Okay, all right. Good morning again. So prior to July 1st, Maryland allowed for medicinal use. Now, that had certain requirements, come July 1st, it's adult use, the only requirement is that you're over 21. The, going forward, as Mr. DiVala said, there is one dispensary in Wycomico County, it's also located in Salisbury City. That dispensary, so for a period of time, the prior medicinal facilities could pay a conversion fee to become an adult use dispensary. That was done by Peninsula, so now they are in, they are comporting with state law. Between now and the end of the year, and the, the target date from the state is by December 31st in the legislation, there's going to be another round of applications. You may remember a number of years ago, when medicinal first became active, individuals were applying, some were, obviously only one was granted here, but there's going to be various stages of processing, growing, and dispensaries that another round of applications are going to be in effect. So essentially, between now and the new round being approved, no one's going to be able to move in and do any new type of open a dispensary right next door, down the street, or anything of that nature. So from this, until the state acts, there's a, in effect, a more, a non-enumerated moratorium because there are no more licenses to be awarded. Between now and that point in time, the Planning Commission, beginning this Thursday, is going to be looking at the state law and, and making recommendations as to what type of additional zoning requirements should be allowed. State law enumerates some, so for example, a dispensary cannot be closer than 500 feet of a pre-existing primary or secondary school in the state, or a licensed childcare center, or playground, recreation center, library, or a public park, or 1,000 feet of another dispensary at this time. The question Planning Commission will have to look at is what additional zoning requirements are necessary. So that will begin Thursday, recognizing that with the end of the year, time is of the essence, because with working backwards from when your legislative bills become effective, and knowing the state's going to be targeting the end of the year, the goal ideally would have Planning Commission get something to counsel by October to be able to take the action that's needed. Another component for Planning Commission, but also this council to consider, is onsite consumption. So that is not smoking, that is not vaping. State law expressly prohibits onsite smoking and vaping. It does allow for the county and the municipalities to determine whether or not there will be onsite consumption in the form of tinctures, oils, and edibles. I had to look up some, these are all terms that are defined in state law or in COMAR, but basically, it's oils that you can rub, something you can, or something that you can ingest in various forms. I've spoken to the county executive, her position at this point in time, that we'll go through county, the Planning Commission, and obviously council, is that there's not a need for onsite consumption in Wycomico County at this time. But that is something that will be explored, the pros and cons will be discussed with the Planning Commission, I'm sure Sheriff Lewis will discuss that in further detail, what something like that would require for his deputies and their ability to enforce. But if onsite consumption was allowed, again, not smoking, not vaping, then that is something that will ultimately come before this council to decide. So I believe that accurately summarizes what direction it's going, what time, timeframe is enumerated, and then the only other part, and I'm going to meet with Ms. Oland on Friday, is to discuss how to set up some accounts for revenue that will be coming to the county as a result. So there are some state mandated laws regarding receiving money and reporting money that the county will receive. All right.
Josh?
Well, a couple of questions, and I can wait if you all want to continue to present more, but I've got...
I can give you a few more numbers, if you're a numbers folks, just to give you an idea, to fill in where Mr. Illuminati went. So as he did say, there are some, there's two rounds that will be issued for permits or licensees in the state. Overall, total licenses in the next two years, standard license will be 53 grows, that's where they grow the actual cannabis, 90 processors, that's people who actually turn it into something like you name it, vape cartridges, or, or anything that the user can use, and then we're looking at 295 dispensaries throughout the state of Maryland. That's in the next two years. That's their goal. So if you break it down to the first round, this is to be issued, or at least discussed by January 1st of 2024, standard licenses, and that's currently where we are now, there are three licenses, there'll be more being issued in what we call micro, micro grows and micro dispensaries. But basically, right now, you're looking at, by January 1st, 20 grows will be issued, 40 processors will be issued, and 80 dispensaries will be issued by the 1st of January of 2024. Now, I can't tell you where those will be, because that's, because of the new equity law that the governor signed, it has to be spread out throughout the state equitably. So how that is done, that's not my purview, but I can give you those numbers. So you take those numbers and then break it down, we go further down into the second round, which has to be completed by May of 2024. So that's your timeframe, you're looking at, when they will be looking at these licenses being issued throughout the, throughout the entire state.
And so there's a 9% tax, state tax, is that right?
Believe so.
That is correct. The state issues a 9% tax only on adult use, medicinal is not taxed in the state of Maryland.
Okay. And then of that percent, what do we get coming back to Wycomico County?
I can't answer. All I, I work for the governor, so I can tell you what he gets.
So...
He gets 9%.
It's complicated, it's something that we can have another discussion in the future on. So there's sort of tiers of distribution. The first distribution are distributions that are required by law. So for every dollar, a certain percentage unknown is required by law to be distributed to certain entities, which is not counties or municipalities. The second is the complete funding of the Cannabis Regulation and Enforcement Division. So that's the next tier. So hypothetically, if it takes 20% to fund that first tier of required distributions, 30% to fund Mr. DiVala's department and expenses of the Cannabis Administration, then you have on a dollar, 50 cents left. By law, only 5% of that remaining distribution goes to the counties for revenue collected from that county. So Mr. DiVala's representation that Wycomico is one of the higher ones for, under the medicinal program, we don't have data on adult use, then it would stand to reason that Wycomico would inherit, would require more money through this. But it's capped at 5% after the other first rounds of distribution. But on top of that, that 5%, the county shall distribute to a municipality located in that county 50% of the allocation received. So because Peninsula is located within Salisbury, for every nickel that the city, that the county may receive, 2 and 1/2 cents goes to the county, 2 and 1/2 cents goes to the city. That's all set forth in state law.
We're basically getting nothing.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just, yeah, so I guess of that small amount there, then, you know, do we have plans for it? I guess is the, I don't know if the state laid out guidance to the, is that going to the general fund revenue, or is that something specific for enforcement, or for...
Something that's going to, so I'm going, we'll be better to discuss at a future date in the future, because there are, the answer to that question is yes. There's two types of funds, there's a social equity fund, which cannot be used for law enforcement, and then there's another fund, which is general revenue, and I'm going to... enforcement, and then there's another fund, which is general revenue, and I'm going to work with Ms. Oland on that on Friday, and that may be something before zoning makes a decision, council may be asked to at least set up those funds to receive those payments, because I don't know what the timeframe on receiving payments is. If it's quarterly, we have a little bit of time, it's biannual, there's a lot of time. If it's monthly, there's not a lot of time.
Mike, do you have anything to say? Because I was going to ask, I was going to ask a question.
Well, I'm just here to answer questions.
Oh, okay, I was just waiting.
Well, I have a lot to say on this topic, and I'll refrain.
Well, this might lean towards you. I'm, I'm curious, because Colorado has had this same law, and it's been, I guess, since, since I've been out of high school, and I've had a lot of friends move there, but I just wonder, what are the ramifications that you, as a law enforcement officer, have seen, and something that maybe we should be addressing ahead of time? Listen, I'm okay with people doing whatever they want to do, but at the same time, we need to make sure that ever, the public's safe, in case, because I, I hear that DUIs have gone through the roof in, in Colorado, and I, I don't know if, if maybe it's a correlation because of the, the new laws, but I don't know if you guys see anything that maybe we should jump on ahead of time, so that the people that live in this county don't, don't get, don't get hurt.
Well, I can tell you, and I haven't an opportunity to discuss this with Ms. Carter or anyone from planning and zoning, but I've received a, a number of complaints from businesses on Mount Herman Road regarding customers of Peninsula parking in their parking lot, and literally, they can't get any of their own customers in their parking lot, and they've had to hire and employ personal tow truck companies that park across the street and do nothing but tow vehicles for them now. And it's causing a lot of grief. Now, I've got an email that I just received, while I talked to them last night on the phone, they sent this early this morning. They are being harassed by customers of Peninsula. They're being cursed at, they're parking in a parking lot, they've run over barriers that they've implemented, because they said they can't get any of their own customers, and that includes Dr. Nathan's office is one of them. And another one is, well, there are a number of businesses that I've received complaints on, but this one, I spent 42 minutes, I looked at my phone after I got off the phone with the business owner last night, I requested that they generate an email to me documenting everything, and I'll gladly forward that to Ms. Hurley, so she can forward it to the council, and you as well, Ms. Carter, because it's going to be a planning and zoning issue. I, I can tell you that, from a personal perspective and enforcement perspective, there's so much ambiguity right now, we truly don't know what we can and cannot do. Now each homeowner can possess up to two marijuana plants, they can grow two marijuana plants, unless you're a medical patient, you can have four marijuana plants on your property. Regarding personal consumption in public, we finally got a five-page opinion from the Office of Attorney General regarding public consumption of marijuana. You know, instead of putting in layman's terms, one paragraph, what we can and cannot do, they put it in five pages. So, you know, we've got to try to digest that and see what we can and cannot do. I will say this, unequivocally, every law enforcement exec in this state will tell you that the overwhelming majority of violence that associated now with shootings, including our mass shooting the other night, is directly related to the distribution of marijuana. Not crack, not powder cocaine, not fentanyl, not heroin, marijuana. We've done multiple search warrants as a direct result of this homicide in one location in the city, as a direct result of this mass shooting, one location in the city, we recovered seven pounds of marijuana, co-mingled with $65,000 in cash, and loaded firearms in a doghouse in the backyard. So, when I tell you, and there was no cocaine found, there was no fentanyl found, there was no heroin found, it's marijuana. I've got my own opinion, I know what marijuana does to people, I've seen it for 39 years of law enforcement now. Everyone, and my deputies will tell you this, eight out of 10 cars we stop has the odor of marijuana coming out of it. It seem, it seems like everyone is consuming weed today. We are powerless, unless they exhibit signs of impairment with marijuana, we are powerless to do anything about it. We can no longer search a motor vehicle based on the odor of marijuana at all, period. Smell alcohol coming from a vehicle, we're going to get them out and do what we need to do. Marijuana's a totally different story.
What, uh, what about federal, like when you're crossing state lines? Because, you know, federally, it's still illegal, right?
It is.
So, what happens if they're coming from Virginia and, and to Maryland, or Delaware and to?
They're caught with 40 pounds of marijuana, it's a misdemeanor.
Okay, all right, all right.
Used to be a felony, now misdemeanor. That law passed as well. They can possess up to 49 pounds of marijuana, it's still misdemeanor. 50 pounds is the threshold.
So, so right now, you're saying there's not much, even with Colorado having it for years and years and years, there's not much that we can do locally, and, for any of these laws?
No. No, the majority of the hydroponically grown marijuana that we're seeing in the area, it's all black market marijuana, they're not buying it legitimately, they're not, it's not, their marijuana's not being taxed and regulated, it's being shipped in here all the time, from California, Washington State, and places in the Northwest here, part of the United States.
Sheriff, it was, everyone sort of, I think, those in government, especially out in California and Washington, Oregon, and Colorado, were hoping that by legalizing marijuana, it could be sort of a deterrent to the black market and create competition.
Absolutely.
It's actually created just the opposite, from what I understand.
You know, Governor Gavin Newsom, to his credit, the California governor, to his credit, stood up at a press conference, and it's been widely publicized, he said the legalization of marijuana in California has been a dismal failure, and it's been largely due to the black market marijuana. They anticipated taxing and regulating marijuana, but you're never going to keep up with the black market weed. There is an absolute incessant supply of marijuana coming into the United States today, because we are the largest consumers of illegal drugs, and there's no way our government can keep up with it. Our government can tax it and regulate it all day long, but the black market marijuana is going to provide it to you, a third of the cost that government's going to provide it to you, and the potency, the quality of that marijuana far exceeds that, if anything the government's going to give you, the THC content.
You mentioned, you know, the odor of marijuana in a car now, but if there is the odor of marijuana in a car, that does give you the ability to search, is that not true?
It does not.
It does not, but it's illegal to drive and to smoke marijuana.
It certainly is. If we observe signs of impairment, we conduct, we can conduct a DUI investigation based on signs of impairment. Here's the difficulty, we still have no way to measure or quantitate marijuana, one's level of intoxication of marijuana. We can administer a preliminary breath test all day long, testing for alcohol, but there's no instrument on the market today that's been approved at all, or disapproved, that gives us the ability to quantify one's level of intoxication of marijuana. We have no way to determine that. Consequently, it's almost impossible to secure a conviction in a court of law. Now, what we do have are drug recognition experts. I have zero DREs or drug recognition experts in my office, there are zero, to my knowledge, at the Maryland State Police in Salisbury. We've had them throughout the years, but the training for a DRE is so comprehensive, and the follow-up training, the in-service training is very comprehensive, that no one wants to do it. And quite frankly, when we subpoena our DRE to court, drug recognition expert, because very few attorneys and judges know much about DREs, there's very little credibility given to the testimony of a police officer, based on a DRE.
Go ahead, Joe.
That's fine.
I was just going to say, you're very well-recognized sheriff throughout the country for your drug interdiction.
Yes, sir.
Success in that. So, how, how much is, is this really going to compromise those, the drug interdiction process in vehicles?
Well, we're still going to seize large amounts of dope, that's not going to stop us from seizing large amounts of dope. One can still only legally possess up to 1.5 ounces of marijuana. Anyone can only possess 1.5 ounces of marijuana. If it's between 1.5 and 2.5 ounces marijuana, it's a civil infraction. Anything over 2.5 ounces marijuana is an arrestable offense, can be an arrestable offense, not saying we're going to, but it can be an arrestable offense, we're certainly going to seize the dope.
Whereas before, though, if they were smoking, and you saw it, you could open up the trunk, hypothetically, but now?
Now, because you open up a trunk, but you would seize all kinds of other evidence.
So, now, what, you can't, but now you can't do anything?
No, sir.
But that has to impair the interdiction, right?
Oh, it, it impacts us tremendously. We now have the inability to search a car based on the odor of marijuana, whereas before, that's how we got 65% of our illegal guns off of searching cars based on the odor of marijuana. Goes hand in hand.
Hey, Sheriff.
I'm not saying everybody who smokes weed has a gun, that I am not saying, but I'm telling you, 65% of the illegal guns that we seized on traffic stops were as a direct result of searching motor vehicles based on the odor of marijuana. Yes, sir.
Would you comment on the use, the fact you can't use dogs anymore?
We've had to, and you can't decertify a dog, we've had many, many dogs that were trained to detect the odor of marijuana, thank you for that, sir, and we've had to retire those dogs. These are 13 and $15,000, as you well know, Mr. Merritt, 13 and $15,000 investments that we've had here in Wycomico County that we've had to retire. We can no longer use a dog that is trained to detect the odor of marijuana. So, that makes it extremely difficult. So, we still summons a dog to the scene. If, if a dog alerts for the presence of narcotics in a car, and all we find is marijuana, if we, if we find eight, 10 pounds of marijuana, inadmissible in court, anything we find is a direct result, that's going to be inadmissible in court. So, it's still contraband, we're still going to seize it, but can't charge anybody.
Question here, and I've had someone come to me a few weeks ago with a problem. They lived in a rented apartment, the people that lived upstairs were smoking weed, her husband's a truck driver, and they were worried about whether secondhand smoke, if he went for a drug test where he worked, would affect that. Now, I see here in, in this, what, what you guys sent us, that property owners can ban the use of cannabis on privately-owned property, if you rent, read your rental agreement, see if there's restrictions. So, apparently landlords can ban the use of marijuana, but who would enforce that if, if, you know, I mean, this could affect, this could affect somebody's livelihood, you know, some guy could go get a blood test and not have his job the next day, or is a truck driver, or somebody working in this building, because they've tested positive from secondhand smoke. This is serious.
It's true.
So, who, who enforces that?
Well, I hate to say it's not my office, unfortunately, because again, I'm not a law enforcement officer. There are several avenues. Because of the fact that it's probably a, it has to be handled immediately, the local law enforcement will be called, and the question is, does it turn into a civil matter, or does it turn into an actual legal problem? Because again, 1.5 ounces is legal. So, if that person in the upstairs apartment says, I legally have an amount, they can. Now, if it's in the contract for a rental agreement, it's a civil matter, and unfortunately, coming from the state police side back in the day, we would not be able to enforce that. It's a civil matter. So, I would defer to the local authorities, the county or the, or the city, to enforce that. Unfortunately, troopers can't do that, if they go to a call.
And I don't see where you could either.
We can't either, Joe. I'd just say the same thing, it's a civil matter.
That, that creates a really huge problem, because as toxic as this is now, and I am not kidding, you can have one individual smoking a joint in one apartment, and you can smell that in all the other eight apartments.
100%.
And you have kids in some of those other apartments.
Absolutely.
So, the question really is, and Joe makes a really good point, Sheriff, I mean, what do we do? We can't call the Sheriff's Department and tell them to desist.
We're going to tell you it's a civil problem, we cannot handle that. We have no legal mechanism in place for us to take enforcement action, at all.
It's different than drinking a beer on your couch.
Absolutely it is, John, 100%.
It impacts the entire community.
Absolutely.
Well, I guess the next question arises, can we pass a law as a council?
Mr. Illuminati, they haven't really defined what the local jurisdictions' authority will be at this time, have they?
Not explicitly, right? There's a couple regarding zoning, everything else is unknown.
Could we, could we pass a zoning law where it couldn't be, could not be consumed in rental houses, apartments?
Something to look into.
Yeah.
One question on the licensing, Mr. DiValle.
Yes, sir.
What role will the local jurisdiction, you know, in Wycomico County, and I'm sure in every county, there are specific guidelines we have in place as far as how many liquor dispensaries we can have in the county, very specific. Article 2B, I mean, you know how complicated but precise that can be. So, what are we going to see here? I mean, you know, you're talking about all these different authorities for growing, for processes, and dispensaries, what role will the local jurisdictions have, county versus municipality as well, in being able to control the, the number?
So, as you know, prior to the new law, it was done by seats in, in Annapolis, that's how they determine who got what. The way the new law is, Mr. Illuminati probably knows all the legal terms, I'll give you the layman's terms, but it has to be done, the licenses have to be dispersed equitably, and the understanding of the word equitable has to go with communities that have been targeted, or marijuana has been a higher arrest rate in that community. How they come up with the number, I can't answer that.
What do you mean, a, a community that has a higher arrest rate?
So, I believe, Mr. Illuminati, you can, I'm sure he's got the legal side, but my understanding is, if the community has been targeted by law enforcement for high use of marijuana, in other words, your arrest rate for marijuana in this community is above a certain level, it could be a national level, it could be a state level, it could be an average across the state, I don't know that equation. But what I can tell you is, that's the way the permits are supposed to be, the licenses are supposed to be issued.
So, they get more, they get more licenses?
So, if, let's say ballpark, I'm just, I don't know the numbers, so I'm going to put that on the record, I'm giving you a ballpark. If Baltimore City has 200, and you have 100, and Westminster has 50, you're probably going to get more licensees here than you are Westminster, but not as many as Baltimore.
So, if there's a drug habit, I would say drug habit, so there's a really bad drug habit with marijuana, because I think it's, it's impairing, they will allow more dispensaries in those communities.
Based on the arrest rate and the amount of persons that have been put in jail based off marijuana use, is the way the equitable is termed.
John, the reason for that, say, no, they can collect more taxes that way.
Right, they're targeted.
Again, sir, I work for the governor, and I will not confirm that, but, I mean, it's basically, that is the way, I don't know exactly, and I have been asked this numerous times, you're not the only community that's come to me here, and I'm sure you've heard Ocean City's going through the same thing, and a lot of communities, St. Michael's, they're all going through this. Everyone's asking the same question, how many are we going to get? Now, you could look at getting a grow in this community, in the county, and short of them growing it, they can't sell it from there. So, the question is, does that affect your decision-making? You can have a processor here, someone who makes the product, but doesn't sell it, does that affect your community? And then you have dispensaries and all the other micros that are about to come out, and are being provided grant money from the state to build a business to make it equitable.
So, if you have an area in Wycomico County that's known for drunken disorderly hype, you know, an analogy for drunken disorderly, then you would be able to put 10 liquor dispensaries there instead of one? I mean, that's similar to what it sounds like we're saying here.
Mr. Ken, I'd like to be able to say that's a confirmed statement, because a lot of what we do is compared to the alcohol community, but there are some very big differences between alcohol licenses and what alcohol distributors can do, and what cannabis can do. Here's a scenario, cannabis dispensaries cannot advertise anywhere in the public, except for on their property, but if you have a billboard, you can drive down the road and see Coca-Cola and Jack Daniels have now partnered, partnered together, and they're selling, they can advertise. So, the laws are all fitting somewhere along the line of what works, right? Cigarettes went through this, alcohol's gone through it, now cannabis is going through it. But the restrictions on cannabis are very different, but we do try to tie them together with the alcohol community, because that has been an established program.
What would be the differences in the license issued to a municipality versus the county?
I'm sorry, sir.
What would be the difference be between issues that, licenses that would be issued to municipalities versus the county?
There isn't, Danny, it just depends on what the, what the zoning and codes go. So, our, when a license is issued to that community, we still work with local zoning and planning to ensure that the facility that we have allowed a license to go to meets the code, if that makes sense. So, we wouldn't give Wycomico someone, a businessman in Wycomico County, a license, and just say, go do what you want. They still have to meet your planning and zoning. So, if they want to put, if you said, or the law states that you can't be 500 feet from a, a park, and we find out that they're going to put that license in a place next to a park, but we know your county has said you can't do that, or the state law says that you can't, we would not allow that facility to be built there. Does that make, I, I, I'm trying to understand where your question is with what, I'm trying to explain.
Well, if the county only wants three, three dispensaries, and the city of Salisbury says we want 10, where are we?
You don't, it's up to the state to decide how many you get.
Well, let's say they say we can have 20.
If the state says 20?
Yeah, I mean, how do we determine, maybe the county says we don't want any, I mean, how, how are you going, there's going to be a bit of a conflict, I think, between what the city, the municipalities might want, and what the county might want.
Understood, and I wish I had an answer for you, but I think that starts leaning towards a legal side of the, I understand what the law states, and the way our program works is that, basically, if the licensee applies, and it meets the criteria of the license, and it is in the county that they say they're going to put it in. and it is in the county that they say they're gonna put it in, unless the county says no because of some type of law, some type of ordinance you've put in, it's gonna happen.
Well, I would think that maybe the city might be the one, the city might be the one. The city may not want ten dispensaries down here, but the, the state says you can have ten in the county, and all of a sudden, all of the licenses come up, you have ten in the city of Salisbury. They may not really, I'm trying to see who can, who will be able to restrict what to what degree.
I would have to defer that question into our legal counsel to get that answer, because I believe this is not the only jurisdiction that's asking that question.
Okay.
And I believe Ocean City might be doing the same current thing, right?
One of the things I think you all would find very interesting, if, uh, if you are found to be consuming marijuana, any occupant inside of a vehicle, excluding the driver, but an occupant of a motor vehicle, it's only a twenty-five dollar civil citation, twenty-five dollar civil citation. If we find an open container of alcohol in your vehicle, whether we see anyone drinking or not, the driver gets a five hundred and thirty dollar citation. If you're caught trafficking marijuana with a loaded firearm, it is no longer a separate charge at all. There's no charge at all. There's a charge for having a firearm, but it used to be a separate felony charge for trafficking marijuana with a firearm. They did away with that. It's all part of reimagining America.
Is that an illegal firearm or just a firearm in general?
Firearms general or illegal firearm, it doesn't matter. If you have a, if you can literally, if you have a permit, it's no, no charge, period. But if you have an illegal firearm on you, you can charge them for the firearm, but not for trafficking marijuana with a firearm, which used to be, which used to be a felony in Maryland.
Okay. So, but we can possibly, in the future, if we need to do something with our, our zoning laws? So it says five hundred feet within a park or a school, we could extend the five hundred feet to a thousand feet, maybe, if we had to?
That's what the playing commission's gonna be looking at.
Okay, great. You guys are looking into it.
According to the email I got, effective July the first, Peninsula went from having three hundred customers to one thousand customers.
Wow.
Is that a day?
What's that?
Is that a day?
On July first? If you've driven by there, you would think it's a day, yes.
Where is it?
They're open seven days a week.
They're on Mount Herman Road, do you know where Dr. Nathan's, Wycomico High School?
Yeah.
If you're traveling on Mount Herman Road, just down on the left, past Dr. Nathan's office, just prior to CQ Bank, they're located in.
You'll see Peninsula Solutions, which is a business, and then you'll see Peninsula Alternative Energy, which is a cannabis business, then Kathy's Pet Salon on the, on the east side of that.
So they used to be over on Snow Hill Road, right next to the veterinarian clinic, but they have moved. They just recently were brought out by another company that has two other dispensaries in the state of Maryland. So I'll be watching them carefully about how they transition. There are some plans for them to renovate, but that renovation will not, um, include parking. So on the record, I will be happy to take that complaint and take it to the new ownership. I happen to be a, um, patient of Dr. Nathan's, was sitting there the other day, and I noticed the foot traffic. They're parking down at the strip mall, walking down to Peninsula.
And, and the county doesn't make hardly anything off of the, the tax, the nine, nine percent tax?
Two and a half cents.
We make two and a half cents, I guess, right?
It's miniscule.
Very miniscule.
It's no more than five percent of what's collected.
And then if we need to, in the future, maybe we, uh, could we write a letter to the, uh, to the General Assembly of our concerns? If we have, you know, I'm sure we're gonna have some. Yeah.
It's safe to say that Mount Herman Road's not the safest place to drive anymore, right?
No.
No. Can I clear up that one thing? Isn't it fu, no more than five percent of the balance after the first two steps are paid out?
Correct. So if it ta, if the cost to, for the first step and for the division takes up all of the revenue, then there's nothing else to get passed on. Mr. Carter, do you have a, like a timeline in place as to, or Mr. Illuminati, as to when you think your presentation will be ready?
Um, so as he has stated, we'll be meeting this Thursday, so this will be the first discussion. Um, and hopefully, as he had stated also, that, um, hopefully we'd be able to get something back to you probably in October, hopefully.
Are there being, are there several public hearings that are being held?
At the moment, this is just the discussion. So we're just having the actual, um, discussion. Hopefully, within the next couple of meetings, we've moved the meeting in August up till the tenth. So hopefully by September, we're thinking we possibly can get maybe the first public hearing, I'm not for sure. So as we move on Thursday, we'll know more what that looks like, and, but at least we wanna have the exact same resemblance of what we did with solar. So there was several, we probably met on that about at least three or four times on that.
I, I have a quick, uh, concern. Um, we have, we're a college town, and you know, there's college students go on alcohol binges, and we're talking about marijuana, and Salisbury University is a school. So how would you handle that? Because you know how college kids are, they might be under twenty-one, but they have, could easily get the marijuana. So how do we work with Salisbury University in monitoring where their students smoke the marijuana? You'd probably have to work with, uh...
But Salisbury University would have to have a policy regarding that and having marijuana on the campus. That would be something internally that they would handle.
Yeah.
Because once they're eighteen years of age, keep, keep in mind that, uh, even, you must be twenty-one years of age to legally purchase marijuana. We have two separate civil infractions. One between the ages of twenty to eighteen, because you, you, in possession of marijuana, and those that are seventeen years of age and younger, two separate, uh, charges. You must be twenty-one years of age to buy marijuana, period. Are there college kids twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and older? Absolutely. But they would have to, uh, have an internal policy that regulated and governed that and addressed that issue. That wouldn't be a law enforcement issue.
What's the age restriction on possession?
Sir?
What's the age restriction on possession? What's the age limit on possession?
Well, you can't possess it, period, unless you're twenty-one years of age. You must be an adult, absolutely.
For possession?
Yes. You must, you must be twenty-one years of age or older, not, and we all know that eighteen years of age, you're an adult. But eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-olds get a, a civil citation for possession. Set, and, and then there's a separate charge, separate statute for those seventeen and under.
I do wanna clarify one thing, not to step on the sheriff. The medicinal side does allow for eighteen to twenty-one, but they must, must have the medicinal card with them. So if they're stopped, they say, "I'm eighteen and I'm a medicinal patient," which is possible at a college facility.
Absolutely.
Because it's been prescribed by a doctor, they are allowed to have it, and they can walk into a dispensary and buy it, but they must, must have that ID card with them at all times.
Well, even medicinal users may not drive a vehicle, as I understand it. Even if you have a medicinal card, you are not allowed to operate a vehicle under the influence of marijuana.
It's recommending you not, but you can rest assured no one's ever been charged with that.
What's the, um, what's the ramifications of the seller, if they're caught selling to somebody, like this company on Mount Herman Road, caught selling to somebody under twenty-one?
So that would fall under my purview. We do check. So in the law, uh, they did not. So when a medicinal patient walks into a dispensary, they carry a card. That card gets scanned into a system or manually put into the computer. We use two systems to track medicinal patients. One is called Metric, and the other one's called One Stop. Um, I won't get into particulars, but when they put that in, those two systems will tell the budtender, that's what they're called, um, if that patient is valid and their card is still active.
That's from medicinal.
Medicinal. So I just wanted to clarify, sir, I'm trying to give you two things. This is where there's been a little, there's a break in the process. An adult, twenty-one or older, walks in, and there are only, and I had one question this morning about what ID can be used, but right now, there are five forms of ID that can only be taken at a dispensary to prove your age. The state law does not require a dispensary to track that person. In other words, I can tell you what patient buys, we call it seed to sale. I can tell you what a patient has bought for the last, how long they've had their card. I can tell you exactly what they've bought, how much they've paid, when they re-up, how much they have in their allotment. An adult walks into a dispensary, all they have to do is show their driver's license or a valid form of ID. The state law does not require us to track that person. I cannot ask you for your ID number, I can't ask you for a passport number, I cannot track you. The law says that.
Same as alcohol.
Correct. But most of the dispensaries, and I say most, I'd say ninety percent of my twenty-four of them, all use point award systems. That is legal by the state. So if you buy a certain amount, you get bonus points. Well, to do that, they have to track you. Now, because that system is in a dispensary, as an investigator, I can ask for that data. But there is no tracking. So the verify if they're twenty-one or not, no different than a, a bar with a, with a bouncer at the door saying, "Are you twenty-one?" That's all it is.
So what's the ramifications if they get caught selling to somebody under twenty-one?
So I write an infraction. That infraction goes to my supervisor who reviews it for validity. Um, it is a preponderance of evidence, so I just have to have an inkling and be able to verify it. It then goes to an attorney that has been assigned to the state. It used to go to a commission, the commission is no longer. It goes to our attorney who looks at it, and it is their responsibility to decide what the fine or the penalty will be. It can be appealed, but as of right now, we're still in the infancy. But if I were to find somebody, if it gets heinous and we find it's repeated, technically to a point, I can shut them down.
It'll, it'll get worse, the more competition that comes along, I guess, but, um, as far as alcohol goes, they do alcohol stings. Where, please, will you be doing those to test these people?
So I can't? Again, I'm not a law enforcement officer. Now, we can partner with alcohol, tobacco, and cannabis to do them. Maryland State Police does that with their local jurisdictions when they do the alcohol underage buy stuff. So is that down the road? Sure, absolutely. There's a lot of loopholes, there's a lot of pieces that we're seeing already, these vape shops that are popping up all over, the Delta Eight sales. I'm getting complaint after complaint after complaint about them selling illegal narcotics, CDS, or the, the cannabis. Unfortunately, I can't go in and do enforcement on them. They're not a licensee. So I have to partner with local jurisdictions until the comptroller's office is up and running, because they're just getting on board with this, just like we are.
Appreciate, yes, Jeff. Sheriff Lewis, thank you, um, for sharing all that information. In, in another role, I, I work quite a bit with the business community, and as you can